I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the Republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Good morning, everybody. Can I, let's see, get a motion to approve our agenda this morning?
So moved, Madam Chair.
Thank you, is there a second?
Second.
Thank you. Any public input on agenda? If not, Chair, we call the roll.
Commissioner Poppins?
Yes.
Commissioner Gibbon?
Yes.
Commissioner Schmidt?
Yes.
Commissioner Landin?
Yes. We'll move on to our consent agenda. Can I get a motion on that, please?
So moved, Madam Chair.
There a second?
Second.
Thank you. Chair, we call the roll.
Commissioner Poppins?
Yes.
Commissioner Gibbon?
Yes.
Commissioner Schmidt?
Yes.
Mr. Landin?
Yes. Then we're going to move on to regular business. State's Attorney, Wallman, did you need me to take you first? No, you're good? Okay. We'll take item one on our agenda then, considering an application for a temporary on-sale liquor license. Is the applicant present?
He is not here. I just texted him to see if he was coming. It might have been a miscommunication, but the application is for a wedding that he wants to have at his place. He currently has malt beverage license, and he's in good standing with it, so we don't have to have a hearing, we just have to approve it.
All right. Any discussion? If not, consider a motion?
Move for approval, Madam Chair.
Is there a second?
Second.
I got a second? All right, great.
He runs a good operation.
Any public input on this agenda item? All right, if not, Chair, we call the roll.
Commissioner Poppins?
Yes.
Commissioner Gibbon?
Yes.
Commissioner Schmidt?
Yes.
Commissioner Landin?
Yes. Then we have a first reading. Who's handling that?
I guess I'll read it. So it's first reading for ordinance of Lincoln County, South Dakota, rezoning tract one, Klinghiggins addition, northwest quarter, section five, township ninety-nine, Le Valley Township from A1 agriculture district to C commercial district, and amending the official zoning map of Lincoln County. The planning commission recommends approval six to zero.
Thank you. Move on to board discussion on our comprehensive plan update.
I'm Tom Berry, here to give an update on the Lincoln County comprehensive plan update. And I'm Tom Berry, Senior Planner at Stantec, and my associate Katie Kement is here to speak as well. Just the quick agenda today is to walk through six quick items. One is just what is comprehensive planning, the process to date, the community engagement survey and the results to date, our future land use map, some observations we've been making so far, and next steps. It's really what is comprehensive planning, really per South Dakota state statutes, the purpose of the comprehensive plan is, and I will just re-read this for folks, shall be for the purpose of protecting and guiding the physical, social, economic, and environmental development of the county, to protect the tax base, to encourage distribution of population or mode of land utilization, that will facilitate the economical and adequate provisions of transportation, roads, water supply, drainage, sanitation, education, recreation, or other public requirements, to lessen governmental expenditures, and to conserve the development of natural resources. The plan contents, so your existing comprehensive plan was approved in 2005 with additional amendments later. The plan itself, the current plan, has these sections of an introduction to purpose, the description of the study area, some demographic information, some information about the infrastructure, some comments and information about the schools, parks, and open spaces. There's a growth analysis section. There's some discussion about existing land use and the future land use map itself. There's also a planning policy framework, which is the goals and policies of the plan. And then there's also a planning implementation considerations. Again, that was what was in the 2005 and amended plan. The intent of this update is to really, in essence, refresh, you know, review, refresh, get comment, to up that. We're not going to get a wholesale change. The great news is, there's good work already in place. Three here that you know, the Lincoln County and Minnehawke Hazard Mitigation Plan. This is the old one from 2018. It's my understanding you're in the process of having your new one approved. You recently had your Lincoln County Master Transportation Plan that was completed, and also a few years back, as you recall, there was the Drainage Master Plan. All three of those elements have, you know, really some influence on the comprehensive plan itself. And again, good, good, good information is there, no need to reinvent the wheel. Plan contents, really, I think what's important for the board, and as we have articulated to the stakeholder groups to date, the three main elements, I think, of consequence are that future land use map that we'll share today, a little bit, the draft, I should say, that goals and policies, we're just getting into that now, and a refresher of that, and also then that plan implementation considerations, meaning, once the plan is approved by the board at the end of the year perhaps, then next year, there's opportunities if you wanted to do ordinance amendments or things like that, you know, to address the elements that you've approved in the plan. Here, we're just going to walk through the process and timeline to date. Really what this is, is back in March, we really kind of had a planned kickoff. Toby and I, John and others, were speaking in February, but myself and Katie were here for our open house meetings that we had, really to introduce what this comprehensive plan update is about. Those happened, those open houses were in Harrisburg and Canton in March. Then in April, we were again internally gathering that information and working with staff. May, we had more stakeholder engagement, stakeholder meetings specifically in the city of Harrisburg, and then we had an evening working meeting with the planning commission in May. June, we had individual stakeholder meetings. We've been engaging the school board specifically to get some information from them, because again, that student population helps and does influence growth, development, transportation, all of that, you know, as kids and families go to school. We also had working sessions with specific county staff, as well as some of the rural water folks, to really get a good sense of, you know, what their input is. Now, we are here before the board, giving you your update, and later this afternoon, we're having another stakeholder meeting to walk through, not only as you'll see that draft future land use map, but then also we're going to start talking about some of those goals and policies. What you'll see here again is, I think, what's been important, and really the bulk of the discussion and engagement so far has been through our community surveys, and also these individual stakeholder meetings. We did have this phase one community survey that was online on the county website back in March through May, to really help set the tone, to get a sense of, you know, what are on folks' minds, to then gear us towards and steer us towards now this phase two community survey that is online now. And with that, I'll step away for a minute and let Katie walk through some of those things.
All right. Good morning, Madam Chair and Commissioners. As Tom mentioned, I'm going to walk through some of the community engagement survey results that we have so far. The first survey was posted on the county website from project kickoff in March through May, and we received three hundred and sixty-five responses total. The intent of the phase one community survey was to get some high-level information from the community in Lincoln County on their thoughts of what opportunities and services are provided in the county. So questions were really broad level, and the results in full are currently on the county website, so check there if you'd like some more in-detail information on that. But I'll just go over a couple big takeaways from the phase one survey here. Seventy-two percent of survey respondents said overall quality of life in Lincoln County is excellent or good. The two most important reasons people choose to live in Lincoln County was proximity to Sioux Falls and rural lifestyle. The three most positive things about living in Lincoln County were the rural character, low crime, and education quality. And the top three negative things were property tax rate, road quality, and housing options and affordability. Seventy-five percent of respondents would rate county government services as excellent, good, and average. And finally, eighty percent of respondents would rate natural environment opportunities in the county as good, excellent, and average. And just to note, the survey was open to the general public, so respondents include people who live in Sioux Falls, cities in the county, and rural residents. And also, there are some questions in that survey about quality of roads, and your average respondent might not realize that some roads are county-owned and operated, and others are owned by township cities, et cetera. So just a note on that. So our phase two community engagement survey, which was informed by phase one, is intended to dive a little bit deeper into trends to guide the contents of the comprehensive plan. The phase two survey is currently on the county website and will be for a couple more weeks. And we have some preliminary results from that survey, which I'll go through here. Seventy-nine percent of people rate, or said that enhancing regulations to manage urban growth, expansion, and development is very important or important. Seventy-nine percent also said that keeping urbanizing areas near existing cities and keeping agricultural areas rural is very important or important. Eighty-one percent said that providing for bike and walking trails, safe shoulders, and parks, and natural areas where or when opportunities occur is very important or important. Ninety-two percent responded that protecting our natural resources like lakes, rivers, streams, and remaining wetlands is very important or important. And finally, ninety percent of respondents said that enhancing communication between the county, cities, and townships to manage growth and development is very important or important. So that's just results to date. Again, this survey will be open for several more weeks, and we'll look forward to posting the full results on the county website at that time. With that, I'll pass it back to Tom.
Thank you, Madam Chair, Commissioners. Really why are we here with the comprehensive plan update? Again, the last plan, as I said, was, you know, initially adopted in two thousand and seven, or two thousand and five, with an update. I think this is just really kind of telling. Back in the two thousand and five plan, the comprehensive plan predicted at that time a population for Lincoln County at forty-five thousand eight hundred approximately. Interestingly, you know, you hit that population really in two thousand and ten, so you're looking at twenty twenty-five, obviously ahead of the game. So that really just shows that since two thousand and ten, you've had population growth of almost sixty percent. Again, you're at about seventy-one thousand and change right now here in two thousand and twenty-three, I think we're in. So really, what we're looking at now is that future land use. So this is a side-by-side comparison, and the next slide is going to show you the specific draft future land use map. The one on the left is one is from the two thousand and five existing plan. Really what that shows is you can see the urban expansion areas, joint jurisdictional areas, some rural commercial and industrial areas along the main transportation corridors, and just the way that that's laid out there. To the right then is the draft again, as I'm saying, and that is really showing cities, the joint jurisdiction around the city of Sioux Falls. And then really what's kind of, I think, telling that people, I think some folks have missed, you know, just in discussions, when you look at the old map where it's white, well, that is still the agricultural area. So that is while land use is not zoning, you know, that is what is out there. You know, that's ag. Well, white kind of implies, at least when folks like myself look at a piece of paper, if it's white, there's nothing on it. That isn't true. Here in this case, that's why we reshaded that, the ag area, to show it, you know, that's, you know, that's the land use, it's ag, it's rural. Really, I guess, really what I want to talk to and get some input for you perhaps is, this draft future land use map really is based on all this input we've received to date, is keep it simple. I think that's really, again, from the information we've received, this new map is showing again where the city boundaries are itself, the joint jurisdiction off of the city of Sioux Falls, where the park land is. The vast majority of the county is agriculture. Again, land use and zoning is not the same, but that is zoned agricultural. It also is showing the main transportation routes along there as well. You will see up and down the interstate and on some key other roads as well, there are those rural, commercial, industrial nodes. The intent of that, as we continue on and have a discussion this afternoon with the stakeholder group, and ultimately it's the board's decision as we move ahead, the intent of that is, those rural, commercial, industrial nodes will almost be sending zones, for perhaps, lack of a better word, to then help manage and eliminate the conflicting land uses that tend to occur in rural areas. And, you know, and that being, folks have ag land, somebody wants to put up, let's say, a storage unit perhaps, how many storage units do you want in the ag areas? Should those be more centralized on or, you know, within transportation routes? Again, if the public wants to keep rural areas ag or ag areas rural, keep that rural, keep the sending zones, you know, around the cities. Any comments on this before I continue on? Okay, if not, just some quick key observations to date. Again, lots of great input we've received in our meetings, as well as from the surveys themselves. The consensus seems to be guide development to the cities, preserve the agriculture within the county's jurisdiction. Again, the county doesn't have authority over the cities of Harris, T., you know, obviously Sioux Falls, your authority is within the rural areas. Three is establish, again, those rural, commercial, and industrial nodes at those key intersections. Really, what does that do? It helps aids in that traffic management and limit, you know, and does limit those land use conflicts over time. Another recommendation we're seeing is, the comp plan itself has fourteen goals, I'm not sharing those goals with you now, you can look back for enjoyment on the existing plan itself. There are fourteen goals. We're calling it just an administrative diet. There's a number of those of the fourteen. Some get into aesthetics, which the county doesn't have any real authority or ordinances associated with aesthetics. Is that something the county board, you know, wants to manage aesthetics? Probably not. So there's going to be recommendations as we walk through with the stakeholders over some of those, we will neck down from fourteen to a smaller number. And then lastly, this afternoon, we're going to be walking through with these stakeholders. We'll see that draft land use map later this afternoon that I shared with you, and then also start walking through that introduction to that existing comp plan goals. I'm almost done. Thank you for your patience here today. Next steps, process and timeline, really, again, we are here back in August, as I stated. We will be back again here most likely in September. We will coordinate with staff on that. We're going to have one final round of a general public open house that we had. Again, we've engaged the stakeholders now, again, the public, while they are engaged and obviously seeing what we're talking about today on TV, as well as opportunities to engage, they're going to have another opportunity to engage with that. So again, in end of September, October, we will be assembling the information and updating all those other sections. The plan as of this morning is still, come back to you sometime in November with a draft for your review and ultimate approval. I think there's no reason we can't get it before you, before the end of the year, that's the intent, is really hopefully before Thanksgiving, but it depends on how the public engagement goes. And with that, thank you. Any questions?
On the number of respondents that you get, are they, you've done this before, is this about average of what, or is it higher or lower?
Madam Chair, Commissioner, I would say it's a little higher than in some instances, again, the outreach to the individual community, you know, or the folks, you know, being aware of it is really has been just through the website itself. You know, I know here within, you know, the county building, there's been flyers available for folks to be aware of it. But I would say, as Katie indicated, there was three hundred and ninety-five, I believe, from the first survey. That's a pretty good response. You know, again, you could do direct mailing and send postcards, reminders to get people involved, but as you know, with governance, it's who engages. You know, yes, there's three hundred and ninety-five, well, there's thousands who haven't responded, but typically, we get a sample size above several hundred. It's starting to show what the public is thinking, so be aware of that. And again, I'll just say for this second survey, we were originally going to close it at the end of July, but now, speaking to staff, we've reopened that, you know, that'll be out there a few more weeks.
And you're in Liberty School today at one o'clock?
Yes, sir.
Till?
Two thirty.
Two thirty. Okay.
One of these last slides, you had something on establish rural, commercial, industrial nodes at key intersections. What do you mean by that? Nodes at key intersection?
Sure. Madam Chair, Commissioner, here you see on this map, I guess, you know, this is a nice illustration of it, those kind of pinkish salmon color rural, commercial nodes, really what that, you can see north and south primarily. That is, in essence, from the land use map again, is different from the zoning map, but I could envision that the county board will then look at establishing commercial zones, zoning, in along key areas, you know, within these commercial, you know, along transportation routes. Again, meaning, I wouldn't call them sending zones, but they're opportunity zones to where if people want to establish industrial uses or commercial uses, it's along those transportation corridors instead of, and you see this throughout the upper Midwest and the plain states, you know, in rural areas, oftentimes, folks will want a commercial use that's not within the city, because there's maybe too much regulation, or the permit is too high, or whatever the issue is, they want to be out in more of the rural area where there may be less regulation, less conflict. The issue is, over time, as you have those haphazardly throughout the landscape, then it does impact negatively transportation routes, because people are coming in and out of it, if it's a, you know, commercial zone. This just tightens it up a little bit more to then have, again, it is about, at the end of the day, trying to eliminate or avoid those conflicts in land use. I hope I answered your question.
It was nice to see that people do recognize that the services that the county provides are well-received and appreciated. That was a nice number. Very good.
Yeah, Madam Chair, Commissioners, I would strongly encourage you to go out and the general public to go out to the website, because again, not only are there the individual answers, but then we have comments, and the comments are always interesting and helpful. Again, a comment is from one individual, so one voice really doesn't shout louder than the other, but nonetheless, it's just nice to get some themes of what is on people's minds, and then that comes up as we have our conversations with, you know, in our meetings. And again, then we are the scribes, we're listening, you know, from what we may want as professionals is not our goal or our role, you know, it's really ultimately what the public and the county board ultimately wants.
Tom, the meeting that's at one, you said?
Mm-hmm.
At Liberty in Harrisburg?
Mm-hmm.
Is that an open house? What's the format of it?
Yeah, Madam Chair, that was an invite to the specific stakeholders in the past. Again, I don't have the list in front of me, Toby can explain that, but that has been the individual cities, rural waters invited, the school districts are invited, politicians are invited, key businesses or ag uses are invited, you know, it's really kind of the litany. The general public, as with any, you know, can certainly attend, however, it is more specific to, as we're walking through some of those items today, with the, you know, there, as a stakeholder, they have, as everyone does, has a vested interest in giving some input. That's really the intent, is then they can focus on what their interests are.
All right, thank you.
Okay, great, thank you.
Any public input on this agenda item? We're not taking any action today. All right, we'll move on to item four then.
Commissioner Landin? Joel Arons is on the phone.
Oh, okay.
Good morning, Commissioners.
Good morning.
Tracy with HR Director, so coming to you all for action to approve a reclassification and re-categorization of the Commission Assistant job to an Assistant Commission Administrative Officer. So in your packet, you should see an updated job description. Basically, our goal is now that we have our Commission Administrative Officer in this position, we have a vacancy in his office, we had a Commission Assistant that we moved over there back in May, but now that that position is no longer full and that Steve is here, we have looked at the position and the needs of that office, and have determined, as noted in the fax and vetting, that we need to re-categorize that position to be someone who can have legal and/or public administrative background, as well as more experience in administration and the ability to do projects on behalf of the Commission Administrative Officer. We're looking at someone who can help with policy research, strategic planning and prep, and even looking at possible grant writing opportunities. And so our ask is to move, to have you approve the updated job description, and then also reclassify this job from a grade one oh five to a grade one ten. I know that's a lot of information, so. I did note here, some of the reasons for the changing from the grade one ten is we have a, based off of our previous work, we have a job evaluation manual that helps us decide, okay, based off of experience, education requirements, and scope of responsibility where they should grade out, so that's where we have that one ten.
All right, anybody have questions for staff?
So how much of an increase is this, though?
Yeah, we're going from a range of forty-five thousand, fifty thousand is the current salary, to sixty-two to sixty-nine thousand, so about an increase of twelve to fifteen thousand a year.
So an increase of?
Twelve to fifteen thousand annually for a salary.
Okay.
We will be, if this is approved, we'll start recruiting.
But the responsibility goes up.
Yes, yeah, that's their goal.
A great deal when you start talking about the legal, administrative, policy, research, grant writing, et cetera.
Yes.
Yeah.
We believe that the opportunities that this individual can bring to, and what the work they can do to bring to the county should more than compensate for that.
A lot of chips on the shoulder.
Any other questions for staff?
So the total amount would be how much then, Tracy?
And the salary annually would be between sixty-two and sixty-nine thousand.
Do you need a vote?
Anybody have any other questions for staff? Can I get a motion, please?
I would so move, Madam Chair, to change the definition of the Administrative Officer. I can't give the full title. Would you repeat that again, Tracy?
Yeah, to be, to re-categorize it to the Assistant Commission Administrative Officer.
That would be my motion.
All right, is there a second?
I'll second the motion.
Got a motion and a second. Any public input on this agenda item? All right, if not, any further discussion? Chair, we call the roll.
Commissioner Arons?
Yes.
Commissioner Poppins?
Yes.
Commissioner Gibbon?
Yes.
Commissioner Schmidt?
Yes.
Commissioner Landin?
Yes. Motion carries. Next item on our agenda, Tom, do you want to come up?
Thank you, Madam Chair.
Good morning.
Appearing this morning on behalf of the, let me pull up my computer here, I didn't get a chance to print it, the request for proposals for indigent defense services. This would be a secondary contract following our primary contract that goes out to Dave Stewart, would be for overflow and for additional appointments for a period of one year to include felonies, misdemeanors, delinquencies, and chins, and abuse neglect actions. Looking for authority from the board to be able to publish this and get this out the door for request for proposals.
Thank you. Does anybody have questions for Mr. Wallman? All right, no questions? If not, then I would consider a motion.
I'll move, so moved, Madam Chair. Move this thing along. This is something that's not going to go away, it's something you needed.
Can I get a second, please?
I'll second the motion.
Thank you, I've got a motion and a second. Any public input on this agenda item? All right, if not, any discussion amongst the board? All right, if not, Chair, we call the roll.
Commissioner Arons?
Yes.
Commissioner Poppins?
Yes.
Commissioner Gibbon?
Yes.
Commissioner Schmidt?
Yes.
Commissioner Landin?
Yes.
Tom, question?
Yes.
Have we heard anything from the summer study on helping with indigent care from -- From any of the, one of the state is having this thing?
I think the takeaway was that there needs to be a statewide public defender's office. I think it's continuing to be, continuing to be discussed by that, by that group.
And that would take legislative action?
I believe so, yes. Yep. I think they're looking at funding mechanisms and, and all that good discussion that, that follows.
Okay.
Yep.
All right.
All right, thanks.
Thank you.
We won't ask you for your opinion and likelihood that that will happen, but.
All right, now we need an amendment to a resolution.
Resolution two thousand six oh four was setting the cell phone statements. The change that we're doing on here is to add all department heads, the Assistant Commission Administrative Officer, and then just clean up the language a little bit.
All right, everybody had a chance to review that resolution? All right, is there a motion?
So move, Madam Chair.
I've got a motion. I've got a motion and a second. Any public input on this agenda item? All right, if not, Sherry, we call the roll.
Commissioner Aaron's?
Yes.
Commissioner Poppins? Commissioner Gibbon?
Yes.
Commissioner Schmidt?
Yes.
Commissioner Landy?
Yes. We'll move on to our opportunity for public comment. Anyone wishing to speak to non-agenda items can come up, and you'll have three minutes.
Good morning, my name is Linda Montgomery from Fairview, South Dakota. I'm just, want to touch on a subject about last week that we talked about having a public get together as Doctor, Commissioner. I just elevated you to Doctor.
I was like, that'd be my daughter, not me.
Commissioner Poppins about having a get together with the community for election integrity and ESNS. Well, I had the privilege to go to five counties and six towns in the last two weeks. The reception made by South Dakota canvassing, which would have been the, the other half of the speakers that you would have gotten together, was met with goodwill all through. There were legislatures, there were commissioners, they were citizens. The groups involved were asked, South Dakota canvassing, the people who asked were central committees, commissioners, women's groups, and a community group. Now, the reason I bring this up was because the, you know, I know in our talks last week, we couldn't have it because the Secretary of State couldn't come, or ESNS wouldn't show up, where they didn't even show up last week for their own recertification. But I, I just really ask you, Commissioner Poppins, to bring this to the forefront again. We need, what I saw and the, the opportunities that people had to ask questions, all information provided had research that went along with whatever was commented on. Also, this morning, I did send you a, and I'm sorry you didn't get it earlier, was an article on ESNS. The headline was "Breaking Explosive Shocking Attempt to Hide the Truth Uncovered." "ESNS Accused of Blocking Access to Crucial Election Records Nationwide: Massive Election Fraud Exposed." This is most likely the tip of the iceberg. I'm just saying that. And, and you can read it, the research is out there, it'll take you about fifteen minutes, and this, I, like I say, I'm sorry I didn't get this to you earlier. I would have so that you could have actually had an opportunity to see it, and thank you. Have a good day.
Thank you.
Good morning, my name is Penny Baybridge. I'm from Sioux Falls, South Dakota, and wanted to thank you for this opportunity to speak with you this morning. I wanted to speak about customer service. Again, I, I address this because it's a passion of mine. I've worked for the last twelve years in customer service, and, and I see things that might be a concern. One thing about customer service is resolving the issue. Someone here spent just a moment that, you know, they were going to dance with this because, you know, it's just not going to go away. And this is something that is a concern by the public. It in no way impunes the honor of anyone here or anyone in the county. Everyone is doing their best face. But to allow the people to speak and to see their evidence, it shouldn't be denied because the other side isn't showing up. The freedom to speak should be done and be able to show their evidence, and I would ask you to reconsider to do that again. Also, after the meeting last week, on Tuesday night, I went out to dinner with a group of friends and, you know, just to relax and talk about kids and recipes, and just wanted to chill out. And one of the gals mentioned that she'd gone to the courthouse over here in Lincoln County earlier that day, and she said that when she came in, there was no, it wasn't busy, and so she mentioned the person behind the counter, this is the time to come, you know, on a Tuesday afternoon, you're not busy. And whoever it was behind the counter said, you should have been here sooner because there was pipeline people here and they had their T-shirts in their face and they were rude. Again, customer service, because I had people yell at me on the phone and stuff, really, it doesn't go from one to the next. Every customer is, is brought in and it, it shouldn't be talking about people. But anyway, I was just wanting to mention that to let you know. Thank you.
Thank you. Anybody else? All right, if not, we have any Commissioner reports today?
Commissioner Poppins and I attended a meeting last night out at the Marvin Ski Airport in regard to helping Dave, our new airport manager, get started a little bit, and we were able to get some ideas from some of the people that, of course, have hangars and those type of things out there at our, our airport. Good input. We'll, we'll carry on here a little bit, and we focused on some goals that we probably need to look at, and and so I, I thought overall, a lot of good communication, so, anyway, we're plugging away here.
All right. You want to add anything, Commissioner Poppins?
We covered it pretty well.
All right, Commissioner Schmidt, do you have any?
Well, just for public to know, that Commissioner Landy and myself will be going to a executive board meeting of the County Association to discuss issues, pending legislation, passed legislation, and looking at county issues across the state. So, that's all.
All right, thank you for that. I don't have any report today. We've got requests for executive session. Is it just on the indigent defense, or do we need other topics?
I believe it's just the contract matter.
Okay. Can I get a motion to go into executive session, please?
So move.
Just a second. Thank you for that. And I do expect that there's going to be action after that, correct? Yes, all right. Sherry, we call the roll?
Commissioner Aaron's?
Yes.
Commissioner Poppins?
Yes.
Commissioner Gibbon?
Yes.
Commissioner Schmidt?
Yes.
Commissioner Landy?
Yes. Session?
So move.
Is there a second?
Second.
Sherry, we call the roll?
Commissioner Poppins?
Yes.
Commissioner Gibbon?
Yes.
Commissioner Schmidt?
Yes.
Commissioner Landy?
Yes. Okay, so, we're back in our meeting, but we're going to take a recess. We had to, we're making some changes to the draft of the contract for, that we discussed, so when that gets done, then we'll resume our meeting. So we'll be in recess until then. State's Attorney Wallman, do you want to come up?
Have we got Joel on the phone?
Oh, wait, hang on a second, we got to get Joel on the phone.
I'm here.
We do have Commissioner Aaron's with us, so why don't you go ahead, Tom, and just present the action that you're requesting, and then if you'd go ahead and read that contract with the changes that you've made?
Thank you, Madam Chair. As the board is aware, the statutory scheme for indigent defense requires that the county either have a public defender's office, a contract, or that the courts have a list of attorneys that they can appoint from. Lincoln County is traditionally contracted with a firm or firms to handle that indigent, or those indigent defense responsibilities. Currently, based upon our caseload this year, and specifically related to misdemeanor appointments, our contract numbers, and we've already gone through those contract numbers, meaning that there are no more contract attorneys to appoint under our existing indigent defense contract. So, that's what in part today's RFP was for, for additional firms to propose contracts to us, or proposals to us for indigent defense for overflow and for conflict cases moving forward into, through the remainder of this year potentially, and into next year. As a stopgap and as somewhat of an emergency situation, since we don't have a contract or, or parameters in our contract to be able to cover the misdemeanor appointments for the next sixty days, while these RFPs come in, we've proposed and a, a contract for representation of indigent persons and other individuals requiring court-appointed counsel. And we've addressed that in executive session and talked about it as a professional services contract. And if you'd like, Madam Chair, I'll go ahead and, and review this. So this, the highlights would be that it would be for a contract for a period of sixty days, two thirty-day increments, seventy appointments per month, or a hundred and forty appointments total, and that, that there would be a potential for an extension in the event that we're still reviewing RFPs at the conclusion of that sixty-day period, again, to, to get somebody lined up. So, this contract would be made pursuant to SDCL twenty-three A forty-seven and other relevant statutes by and between Lincoln County, South Dakota, herein referred to as the county, a political subdivision of the state of South Dakota, and Myers-Bilian LLP, herein referred to as attorney, for the purposes of fulfilling the statutory obligations of the county as set forth in SDCL Chapter twenty-three A forty and other relevant statutes mandating the appointment of counsel, witness. Whereas, the county is obligated to provide for the legal, or for the representation of indigent persons described as in twenty-three A forty-six, as well as certain other individuals as required by statute, and whereas attorney is licensed to practice law in the state of South Dakota and possesses substantial experience in criminal defense, as well as other pertinent, pertinent areas of law. Now therefore, county and attorney mutually agree to bind themselves to the terms of this contract and to perform the rights, duties, and obligations enumerated as follows. Duration. This contract shall be for an initial period of sixty days, such time commencing on the execution date and continuing until attorney accepts one hundred and forty misdemeanor appointments, unless otherwise terminated as provided herein. At the end of the contracted, our contract period, the parties may agree to extend the period by an additional sixty days. Duties. Attorney shall represent indigent persons as appointed by a judge of the circuit, court, or magistrate in accordance with SDCL Chapter twenty-three A forty and the rules for compensation of court-appointed counsel in the Second Judicial Circuit of South Dakota. Attorney shall accept all appointments up to one hundred and forty misdemeanor cases to represent criminal defendants regardless of the nature of the case or potential maximum penalty involved. In the event unusually complex litigation, or legal issues arise during the course of such representation, attorney may request assistance for additional counsel to be appointed by the judge, judge presiding, the trial judge. And in such event, attorney shall not be responsible for the cost of providing additional legal assistance. Attorney shall provide representation to indigent persons with regard to an appeal from a final judgment based upon a misdemeanor public offense or offenses, the prosecution of which was properly commenced in Lincoln County, South Dakota, in accordance with SDCL Chapter twenty-three A sixteen. Compensation, the county shall compensate attorney for, or for services rendered during the term of this contract as follows, for the period of August eighth, twenty-twenty-three, to October eighth, twenty-twenty-three, ninety-eight thousand dollars. In the event, the terms of this contract are extended for an additional period of sixty days as provided in Section One, the duration. County shall compensate attorney for, for services rendered upon terms to be mutually agreed upon by both parties. County shall pay attorney forty-nine thousand dollars for each thirty-day period this contract is performed. Payment shall be at regular meeting of the Board of County Commissioners, which is scheduled for payment claims, but in no event less frequently than once a month. In event, in the event this contract is terminated by mutual agreement or good cause prior to the end of the month, the county shall pay attorney for all services rendered to the date of termination on a pro rata basis. Thereafter, county shall pay attorney for the services rendered in accordance with Section XI, termination of this contract. In the event the attorney is representing indigent or other persons pursuant to court appointments made prior to this effective, to the effective date of this contract, such representation will be governed by the provisions of this contract after its effective date. And thereafter, county shall compensate attorney according to the, according to the provisions of this contract. Expenses, in exchange for the compensation set forth above, attorney shall assume responsibility for payment of all expenses related to the completion of attorney's duties. Said expenses include but are not limited to those incurred for mileage within the Second Judicial Circuit, telephone, fax, copying, and postage. Notwithstanding the above-mentioned paragraph, county shall be responsible for the payment of all reasonable transcript fees, subpoena expenses, witness fees, mileage outside of the county, or outside of the Second Judicial Circuit, and filing fees incurred by attorney during the course of his or her representation. County shall also be responsible for payment of investigative expenses and expert witness expenses if incurred by attorney in accordance with the rules for professional or for compensation of court-appointed counsel in the Second Judicial Circuit of South Dakota, independent contractor. Attorney shall at all times remain an independent contractor as that term is defined by statute and interpreted by case law. Attorney understands and agrees that at no time will attorney, his or her partners, associates, personnel, or agents be considered an employee of the county. The manner in which the attorney provides legal services under this contract, in addition to all decisions related to case management, shall lie within the sole discretion of attorney. Attorney shall be responsible for the payment of income taxes, FICA, withholding, and other wage-related obligations. Attorney, his, his or her partners, associates, personnel, or agents shall not be considered an employee of the state of South Dakota or county for the purposes of retirement, insurance programs, or other benefits. Liability, attorney shall at all times maintain professional liability coverage, which includes services and duties covered by this contract and furnish proof of coverage to county if so requested. In addition, attorney shall indemnify, defend, and hold county harmless for any and all costs, loss, liability, loss and liability for all injury or damage caused in whole or in part by any negligent act or omission of attorney or anyone directly or indirectly employed by or contracting with attorney. Attorney further agrees to obtain, maintain, and pay for such general and/or contractual liability insurance coverage and endorsements as will ensure the provisions of this paragraph. The minimum liability limits of such general and/or contractual liability insurance shall be one million per occurrence. The attorney agrees to furnish county satisfactory evidence of compliance with this section at the time this contract is entered into and obtain and furnish to county an undertaking by the insurance company issuing such policy that the policy will be, will not be canceled except after fifteen days' notice to the county of its intention to do so. Failure to maintain such insurance or comply with any of the terms of this paragraph shall be term, shall be grounds to terminate this contract without further notice. License to practice, attorney shall be licensed to practice law by the state of South Dakota and be a member in good standing with the State Bar Association during the term of this contract. Attorney's failure to maintain state bar membership or a license to practice law shall be cause to terminate this contract without further notice. If attorney has at any time had his or her license to practice suspended, revoked, or limited by any means, all facts relating to said suspension, revocation, or a limitation must be revealed to county prior to entering this contract. Professional standards, rules of professional conduct. Attorney shall provide legal services in accordance with any applicable professional standards adopted by the State Bar Association and/or the South Dakota Supreme Court. Said standards shall include but are not limited to the South Dakota rules of professional conduct found in the appendix to SDCL Chapter sixteen dash eighteen. Any finding that attorney has failed to maintain said standard shall be cause to terminate this contract. Upon demand by county, attorney shall provide county a complete history, or a complete professional history of any attorney providing legal services under this contract. Client billing and expenses, attorney shall maintain an itemized expense summary for each. for each client for whom legal services have been provided. The cost of each particular legal service shall be itemized on an hourly basis and according to the statewide rate for court-appointed counsel, as established by the South Dakota Supreme Court then in effect. Attorney shall provide and, shall prepare and provide county with an itemized statement of account for each client for whom legal services have been rendered at the conclusion of each case, regardless of the outcome. Such statement of account shall include an itemized list of all reasonable attorney's fees and expenses incurred as a result of the legal services rendered. Attorney shall advise client of the total fee for the services performed. Further, attorney shall advise client that the amount of such fee shall become a lien against all property, both real and personal. And as such, the attorney shall be obligated to repay, or, excuse me, the client shall be obligated to repay county for the cost of such legal representation regardless of the outcome of the case. County and attorney recognize that some individuals for whom counsel has been appointed may have the financial ability to make periodic partial payments to the county during the course of the attorney's representation. As such, attorney shall strongly encourage his or her clients to report any improvement in their financial condition, which would enable them to finance all or part of the representation. Conflict of interest: Attorney is responsible for advising the judge presiding, trial judge, of any case in which a conflict of interest exists. In such event, attorney shall be excused only upon order of the court. If alternative counsel is appointed by the judge presiding as a result of the attorney's conflict, county shall assume the entire cost of said representation in accordance with the rules for, for compensation of court-appointed counsel in the Second Judicial Circuit. This contract shall not be assigned or sublet without written permission of the county. Attorney shall immediately advise county of any, any changes in attorney's partners, associates, or personnel. All changes in attorneys providing services under this contract shall be subject to final approval by the county. Termination: The, this contract may be terminated by mutual agreement of both parties. Further, this contract may be terminated by either party for good cause. Good cause does not include a claim of financial hardship by the attorney. In the event this contract is terminated by mutual agreement, by expiration of this contract, by attorney for good cause, as herein provided, or terminated by county without good cause, attorney shall continue to represent all clients to whom attorney has already been appointed. In such event, attorney shall be compensated in accordance with Section Three, compensation for ninety days from the date of termination, from the date of the termination. Thereafter, attorney shall be compensated at the statewide rate for court-appointed counsel as established by the South Dakota Supreme Court, and in accordance with the rules of professional, or rules for compensation of court-appointed counsel in the Second Judicial Circuit of the state of South Dakota until conclusion of all cases to which attorney has been appointed under this contract. In event that the attorney terminates without good cause, attorney shall provide representation to all clients to whom the attorney has been appointed and other indigent persons who have committed criminal offense, of which the attorney, attorney had knowledge, but have not yet requested a court-appointed counsel. In this regard, attorney shall be responsible for the legal representation of said individuals after the termination of this contract without further compensation by the county. Furthermore, in the event attorney terminates this contract without good cause and refuses or is unable to perform the services required herein, attorney shall reimburse the county for all reasonable attorney's fees at the statewide rate for court-appointed counsel as established by the South Dakota Supreme Court, and for all reasonable expenses incurred by the county as a result of attorney's failure to provide legal services in accord, or according to this contract. In the event attorney fails to abide by any material term of this contract, including loss of license, failure to maintain insurance, or completion of his duties in incompetent manner, county may immediately declare this contract terminated by attorney without good cause. Funding provision: The, this contract depends upon the continued availability of appropriated funds and expenditure, expenditure authority by the, by county. If for any reason county fails to appropriate funds or expenditure authority or funds become unavailable by operation of law, this contract will be terminated by county. Such termination for these reasons is not a default by county, nor does it give rise to a claim against the county. Oral evidence: This contract shall constitute the entire agreement between county and attorney, and any prior oral agreements, written agreements, or representations to the contrary shall be considered as part of county or attorney's contractual intent. All conflicts shall be resolved by reference to this contract first. Severability: Should any part of this contract be declared to be illegal, unconstitutional, or unenforceable, the rest, residue, and remainder shall remain in full force and effect. The rest, residue, and remainder of this contract shall be interpreted without reference to the part or ports, parts, so declared illegal, unconstitutional, or unenforceable. That is, that, those are the terms of the contract. Thank you.
Thank you.
Any questions about?
Yeah, does anybody have any questions? No questions? Commissioner Aaron's, any questions?
No.
Thank you. If not, I consider and ask for a motion to authorize the signing of the document.
I would too, man. I would offer that motion.
Thank you, do I have a second?
I'll second up.
I've got a motion and a second. Any discussion with the public, any public comment on this agenda item? If not, any further discussion amongst the commissioners? All right, Sherry, call the roll.
Commissioner Aaron's?
Yes.
Commissioner Poppins?
Yes.
Commissioner Gibbon?
Yes.
Commissioner Schmidt?
Yes.
Commissioner Landy?
Yes, thank you.
Thank you.
Any need for, any further executive session today? All right, if not, I consider a motion to adjourn.
So moved, Madam Chair.
Thank you, so I have a second.
Second.
Thank you. Sherry, we call the roll.
Commissioner Aaron's?
Yes.
Commissioner Poppins?
Yes.
Commissioner Gibbon?
Yes.
Commissioner Schmidt?
Yes.
Commissioner Landy?
Yes, motion carries. Have a good week, everybody.